I'd like to call the December 6th zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's one application on tonight's agenda. And they're here.
Mr. Brenner.
Mr. Brenner's here. So we go through the, we open each application. Everybody will be sworn in during each, during the application. We'll ask the audience, if anybody wishes to be heard at that time, please stand up to the podium, state your comments. You actually state your name and address. You'll also be sworn in. And we ask to keep your comments to two minutes or so, since we anticipate numerous comments. Try not to repeat things that have been said. Once they're said, we do take them into consideration. And that's it. All right. So make a motion to open the application, ZBA number seventeen dash seventy-four.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Debbie?
Debbie, public notices been complied with?
Yes. I have a favor to ask you.
Thank you. And there's correspondence that you?
Thank you.
I'll read the correspondence into the record. First is from the Rockland County Planning Department dated September twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen. It's two pages, signed by Douglas J. Schutz, Acting Commissioner of Planning, and it reads in substance, "The County of Rockland, Department of Planning, has reviewed the above item, acting under the terms of the above GML powers and those vested by the County of Rockland Charter. I, the Commissioner of Planning, hereby approve. Since the proposed variances will have no adverse impacts on any countywide interests, this matter is remanded for local determination." Next is from Rockland County Sewer District Number One. It's dated August thirty-one, twenty-seventeen. It's one page, signed by Joseph Laffeandra, Engineer Two, and it reads in substance, "Rockland County Sewer District Number One does not object to the plan as shown. This project does not affect any sanitary sewers within the district." Next correspondence. It's from the Rockland County Highway Department dated August twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, one page, signed by Joseph Arenas, Senior Engineering Technician. It reads in substance, "One, the Rockland County Highway Department has reviewed the information provided for the above project and has determined that the proposed action should have a de minimis impact upon county roads in the area. Two, the Rockland County Highway Department has no objections to the Town of Orange Town zoning board of appeals granting this applicant the variance as required to proceed with construction. Three, this lot is within five hundred feet from the county highway slash right-of-way along Western Highway. Due to the location of this parcel, a Rockland County Highway Department work permit will be required for the proposed development, in addition to any and all permits required in Town of Orange Town, and must be secured prior to the start of any excavation or construction on site." Next is from Rockland County Health Department dated August twenty-three, twenty-seventeen, one page, signed by Scott McCain, P.E., Senior Public Health Engineer, and it reads in substance, "This office makes no comment on the requested variances. Comments are as follows. One, this office must approve plans for the sewer's disposal per Article Four, Section four point two point one of the Rockland County Sanitary Code. Formal application is to be made. Two, application is to be made to the Rockland County Department of Health for review of the stormwater management system for compliance with the County Mosquito Code." Next is an email from Brenna Petry. Do you have this, copies of the correspondence? If you need a spelling?
Yes, well.
All right. If you need spelling, let me know. Email from Brenna Petry to Debbie Arbolino and other town officials dated December fourth, twenty-seventeen, and it reads, "Dear Orange Town Zoning Board of Appeals, as a lifelong resident, I vehemently oppose the development of this property. It is too close to St. Catherine's, the rail trail, not to mention it is adjacent to residential homes. The aloof odor is awful enough to deal with as it is. The removal of more trees will just increase the malodorous fumes. I wish I could attend the meetings Wednesday and Thursday to voice my opinion, but I have nursing class. Please let this email stand as my voice. Address given is Blauvelt, New York." Next is an email from Scott Petry to the same individuals, Debbie Arbolino and other town officials, dated December fourth, twenty-seventeen. Dear Orange Town Zoning Board of Appeals, it reads the same as, I'm assuming his wife, Brenna Petry, Scott Petry, also giving address of Blauvelt, New York. Actually, no, reads differently. I'll read it in full. "I am opposed to the development of this warehouse. It is way too close to St. Catherine's rail trail and many residential homes. The aloof odor, in my opinion, will increase if the tree barrier is removed. I am unable to attend the meetings Wednesday and Thursday to voice my opinion. Please allow this email to represent my voice in the matter. Thanks for reading. Scott Petry, Blauvelt, New York." Next is from Dimitri Lattis dated December fourth, twenty-seventeen, addressed to Debbie Arbolino, and it reads, "Please forward this to the ZBA board members regarding linen choice. Dear members of the Orange Town ZBA and Planning Board, I am a physician, reside in Orange Town, and my children attend South Orange Town Central School District. Please advise that the current air quality in the area, schools, homes, rail trail around aloof plastics demonstrates concerning levels of pollution and does not appear to support additional industrial activity. I am particularly concerned for the health of children and the elderly who would be most susceptible to the type of pollution illustrated by recent ambient air testing. It would be negligent, in my opinion, to proceed with additional development in the vicinity, especially given that the building department is not equipped to enforce existing code in terms of odor slash pollution violations. The letter attached was submitted to the Town Board on November twenty eighth, twenty-seventeen by a group of concerned health professionals, including myself. I also have attached a graphic that I compiled from publicly available sources that will give some context to the aqua-lin pollution levels. Sincerely, Dimitri Lattis, M.D." And there's an attachment with a chart. It's entitled, across the top, "Aqua-Lin Concentrations, UG/M3," and along the left side, there's a list of various references. Part of the public record, anyone can view it if they wish. Next is from several people, and I will read who the signatories are, then read the letter. It's dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen. The signatories are Dr. Robert Wells, MBA, Ph.D., Lorraine Vitale, MSNRN, Dr. Nelly Vega-Wu, DNP, FNP, VC, Dr. Maria Jose Romero, Ph.D., Dr. Catherine O'Connor, M.D., Dr. Dimitri Lattis, M.D., Dr. Kathleen Kelly, DNP, MSNRN, CCRNC, N-R-N-V-E, Dr. Peter Gordon, M.D., Dawn Howie, MSNRN, CPNP, Bernadette Delaccio, RN, Dr. Raphael Caniza, DDS, Miriam Burn, NTC, Dr. Ivania Alpert, M.D. It reads, it's addressed to the Orange Town Town Board. It reads, "We are concerned health professionals in Orange Town. There are four emission toxins whose levels are measured to exceed New York State Annual Guideline concentrations, AGCs, in the residential and recreational areas around the aloof plastics industrial zone of Blauvelt. Intermittent short-term exposure to these chemicals at the measured levels is unlikely to cause health effects beyond what has been reported by residents. However, if these concentrations are representative of daily air quality for most of the year, then the exposure to these toxins might cause adverse health effects to residents, students and those employed in the area who may be exposed on a daily basis over months or years. Especially at risk are the young and the old, and those with previous health concerns such as asthma, previous health concerns such as asthma, cancer, or compromised immune systems. Further long-term testing is suggested to confirm these findings, and mitigation measures which would improve the air quality surrounding the aloof industrial zone are warranted. Additionally, the concentrations of aqua-lin were elevated to a degree that they may pose health risks even during short one-hour exposures. Any discussion regarding any proposed additional industrial activity in the vicinity should be guided by these findings that show pollution levels already exceeding New York State thresholds." Next is an email from Iowa Steinberg dated November third, twenty-seventeen. It's addressed to several citizens and several town officials, and it's addressed to the supervisor of the Town Board. It reads in, it reads in full, "I appreciate the letter written by Tom Divney, addressed to the ZBA President Dan Sullivan and other ZBA board members regarding the Kerry Court project, requesting that that project not be granted a variance. It posted, it was posted on the South Orange Town Parents Facebook page. It was thoughtful and convincing. Gladly the ZBA did not and will not grant a variance, allowing a residential home the ability to be a boarding home. With that in mind, I appreciate if Tom and/or other Town Board members would write a letter addressed to the ZBA President Dan Sullivan and other ZBA board members regarding the linen choice project, requesting that project not be granted a variance. Aloof plastics seeking to construct a new facility next to its car facility under the application of linen choice. It is seeking numerous variances, size of facility, reduction in setback to residential homes, reduction in setback to the rail trail number of loading docks, size slash distance of retention ponds in two weeks from the ZBA. I would appreciate that the supervisor and this current board contact Akerbor and the ZBA so these boards do not grant any variances to aloof plastics. If these variances are granted, aloof could potentially buy back this land from linen choice and construct a new facility. Obviously, aloof plastics has not been compliant with the Town Code for many years and has not been the best neighbor to this community. I hope that the aloof plastics slash linen choice application has granted no variances so future boards will not have to deal with the ramifications of this decision." Address given, sorry, ten Murphy Court, Blauvelt. Next is an email dated November third, twenty-seventeen, and it's signed by Allison Sullivan. No address given. It reads, "Good morning. I think in light of all of the unknowns with aqua-lin, it is in the best interest of postpone the linen choice project. We do know aqua-lin can come from car exhaust, and we do know the rail trail had elevated levels of aqua-lin. Please read the document below from the EPA. Too many unknowns to determine the true risk to the residents who live only feet from aloof and who are affected by the odor. Approving a facility that will increase traffic with tractor trailers is irresponsible, in my opinion, at this point. Perhaps a reevaluation of what should be allowed in that parcel of land is needed." Next is an email from Allison Sullivan dated November third, twenty-seventeen, addressed to various town officials.
It's the same one.
It's the same one?
Yep.
And there's an attachment to Ms. Sullivan's email that I just recited into the record. It's entitled "Aqua-Lin." It's a four-page attachment to Ms. Sullivan's email. And that is all for correspondence.
No, there's more.
No, no, no. Thomas and Ellen O'Hara Woods' letter. Their address indicated as ten Chestnut Oval, Orangeburg, New York, and it's dated December five, twenty-seventeen. Two pages addressed to the zoning board of appeals. "I am a resident of Orangeburg, and I've lived in Orange Town for approximately thirty years. I am writing you with regard to the application of aloof properties for a number of variances to allow building of a one-hundred-seventy thousand square foot warehouse slash manufacturing structure with nineteen open loading docks. While the zoning board clearly has the ultimate approval over such variances, I am writing to address the application. It is my understanding that in order to succeed on its application, the applicant must show inter alia that it cannot make a reasonable return on its investment under any other permissible use, and that the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively on a desire to make more money from the property. Given that the applicant purchased this property with knowledge that open loading docks are not allowed, it is impossible to believe that it cannot make a reasonable return on its investment in the absence of saying. It is respectfully submitted that aloof is making such an egregious request for nineteen loading docks in anticipation of the ZBA granting them ten or fifteen, which is still a shocking number and which will have a tremendous impact on the character of the area and the ability of the neighbors to enjoy their property. The applicant also must show, I believe, that any alleged hardship or difficulty necessitating the variance application is not self-created. Inasmuch as the building is yet unbuilt, aloof suffers no hardship by re-engineering its plans. There is no question that the variance being sought will create an unreasonable burden on the neighborhood. The increased traffic from the tractor trailers that will be loading and unloading at these loading, those loading docks will certainly result in a tremendous increase in noise and pollution in an area already struggling from the uncontrolled and appalling pollution from aloof plastics. Finally, review of the application for aloof properties as made available on the Town of Orange Town website indicates that the instant application appears to be a mere variation from an earlier site plan approval for a different project. However, it is respectfully submitted that a closer look reveals that more careful treatment is necessary. When aloof properties first proposed building on this land in or around two thousand and two, there was no subdivision of Murphy Court. Aloof properties sold some of its land to Hegarty Homes, the developer of that subdivision, in two thousand, but the houses were not built upon information of belief until two thousand and six. This is significant for two reasons. First, since there were no homes yet built there, there were no neighbors for aloof properties to notify in two thousand and four when their site plan came before planning board, and not surprisingly, there was no public comment at the meeting on October thirteen, two thousand and four. Second, while this, while the site plan was approved on October thirteen, two thousand and four, aloof had on September twenty, two thousand and four, less than a month earlier, sold more of its property to Hegarty Homes, the developer of the Murphy Court, for that subdivision. The deed was not recorded in the Rockland County Clerk's Office until November twelve, two thousand and four. The planning board decision indicates that it bases approval on a number of documents, including some, notably a drainage and hydrology report that predated the September land sale by as much as two years. See planning board decision, page one, and next to your two. It is frankly entirely unclear whether the site plan approved on October thirteen, two thousand and four took into account land that was by that time no longer owned by aloof properties at all. Because of this uncertainty, coupled with the fact that the site plan approval is more than thirteen years old, and the enormous size and scope of the proposed variances, I am requesting that this board deny aloof properties variance application at this time and adjourn the matter until the status of the two thousand and four site plan can be clarified. Thank you very much for your time and service to this community." And there's a one-page attachment, which is the first page of the planning board decision dated October thirteen, two thousand and four. I believe that is all.
Thank you, Dennis. ZBA number seventeen dash seventy-four, application of linen choice for variances from zoning code, chapter forty-three of the Town of Orange Town Code, section three point one-two, LI District Group Q-Q, column seven, street frontage, one hundred fifty feet required, zero feet proposed. And from section three point one-one, LI District Group Seven, refers to CS District, column seven, number six, no outdoor loading docks permitted, twenty-two proposed. And for an exception pursuant to New York State Town Law, Section two eighty A, relation of structure to street or highways for a proposed warehouse, the property is located at fifty-seven North Troupe Road, Glen Shaw Street, Orangeburg, New York, and are identified on the Orange Town tax map as section seventy point one-eight, block two, lot seventeen, LI Zone. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, to hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Can you please describe your project to us?
My name is Donald Brenner. I'm an attorney in Japan, New York, and I represent linen choice. I think some of the letters here are assuming the fact that aloof is the applicant. The applicant is linen choice. They are a contract purchaser who are going to purchase this piece of property from aloof properties, not aloof industries, but aloof properties, and they are going to build a warehouse for their own company. Linen choice is a company which represents and imports fabrics and materials for hotel use in the metropolitan area. We have appeared before the Orange Town Planning Board, and we received preliminary approval on July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen. We also obtained a negative declaration indicating that many of the health factors which were brought to this attention were also brought at that meeting. It was reviewed, and the board did declare a negative declaration. Again, as I said, we represent linen choice. We have nothing to do with aloof properties. If the board wants to talk about the previous approved warehouse, we have that information which we will give the board, which is much larger than the one that we have right now. Right now, there is an approval for a two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand square foot commercial warehouse building that has been approved by the Orange Town Planning Board in two thousand and two. This application is for a warehouse of one-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet. In other words, a reduction of around sixty thousand square feet. I think Jesse will give you the full details of what the project's all about, and then we'll be prepared to answer any questions that the board has.
So my name is Jesse Coakley. I'm from Mazer Consulting, the engineer of record for the project. As Donald said, we're here tonight representing the applicant linen choice, which is a bedding importer and supplier to large retail stores and hotels. The products, which are just bed sheets, comforters, pillows, blankets, things of that nature, are imported in retail packaging with no manufacturing required at the site. So as Donald mentioned, the proposed warehouse is one-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet, which the subject address of the property is fifty-seven North Troupe Road. To the point of one of the variances we're seeking, there is no frontage, but access for the site is granted through an easement from Glen Shaw Street out to Route three oh three. That is the only access for the site, with the exception being an emergency access for emergency vehicles only that goes out to Murphy Court on the north side. But that will have a gate on it. No tractor trailers will be using that, only emergency vehicles. As Donald had mentioned, the planning board granted preliminary site plan approval in July, and we're here tonight for the variance on the street frontage, the access through the variant, through the easement, and the prohibition of the outdoor loading births. The narrative provided with our application details the operations in full, but as a summary, the hours of operation will be Monday to Friday, eight AM to six PM, closed on the weekends. It is also worth noting, as Donald had previously said, that the previously approved site plan in two thousand and four was for a much larger building with a lot more parking and a lot more lot coverage than the current example. Some of the letters that were read into the record stated that there's a huge number of variances for the size of the project, et cetera. That's not the case, as you, as you read into the record already, as the chairman read in. So right here, I have kind of an aerial exhibit that I prepared showing the project.
Can you turn it around a second?
Absolutely. I'll turn it for you guys in a second. There's, it's a Google Earth image with the site plan kind of overlaid.
Relayed on it.
So as you can see, here are the existing warehouses. On the left side of the plan, which is the east, you have Route three oh three. You have the railroad track here, which you have to cross to get into the building. And then we have the landlocked parcel back here. The rail trail is to the west and to the right, and then further than that is Western Highway. To the north is the residences, the residences. And as you can see, in the LI Zone and the nearby commercial activities, they all have external loading docks. That's common throughout, not only the neighborhood, the zone, and the Town of Orange Town. It's common for industry, too. What else? So let me turn and show the audience real quick. So here's essentially the site plan overlaid onto the Google Earth aerial, where you can see Route three oh three on the left-hand side here to the, to the east. Glen Shaw Street, which is the access, comes between the two, between the two buildings via an easement. Site is located in this area, residences to the north up here, the rail trail along this side, and Western Highway is a little bit further to the west. We are, we also have to get approval from the Architecture Community Appearance Board of Review, which we will work with them. We've supplied full landscaping plans to try to screen as much as possible any of the outdoor births from being as visible as possible. We're also open to planting larger trees than would be the customary installed size, and also putting fences up as well to try to minimize the impact. Two of the things, or one, one of the things that a lot of warehouses and things try to avoid is bringing the trucks inside, and one of the main reasons is, is health concerns for the immediate indoor. There's no, to vent an indoor space from those fumes is extremely cost prohibitive. No warehouses really do that. Only large, large government facilities really do that, military, things like that, so.
I do wish to want to state in the fact that we did an analysis of the town of all the LI Zone districts in the Town of Orange Town. We, we have not been able to detect one indoor parking facilities as related to the LIO district, which is one step down. Ninety percent of the LIO districts have outdoor parking facilities. I think there are one or two which are indoor for, for security reasons more than anything else.
That's it. If you have questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Can you give me an answer on the distance between St. Catherine's Church and school to the proposed building?
To the building, it's about, from the church itself, over two hundred feet, and from the school, it's about almost three hundred feet.
The question is actually, we have children in that school, so also we also have a college that's part of that school, and then we have the church, which has activity that's going on most of the day and into the weekend. So actually, the building of this particular building would be, have a direct effect on people who attend that church and the school as far as odor and everything else that's involved in the church. Can you give me an answer on what you can do to make a difference in the proposal?
Okay, please understand, please understand, there is no odor production on this facility at all. It's strictly a warehouse-type situation where material comes in, and it's exchanged and distributed inside the building and put on other trucks which go out. Again, the hours are not in conflict. They're within normal working hours. Actually, in an LI district, you can go twenty-four hours. We told the planning board we would not go twenty-four hours under any circumstances. We said at best we was going to go to six o'clock at night. We don't see in any way where this particular project will affect the school nor, nor the college nor the church. In fact, they will not be operating on Sunday, they will not be operating on Saturday, when church really has its largest amount of people coming to the church.
How many trucks will be in use during the day?
So at future maximum, you know, capacity, it would be twelve to fifteen trips total. That's in and out. So six, eight?
How many trucks? Twelve to fifteen trucks a day?
That's in and out, so trips. That's trips, yeah. And just for, in the narrative that we provided was a summary of the traffic study, which the traffic study uses industry standards, and for a warehouse of this size, typically it would be three times as many trucks, but with their operation, it's only twelve to fifteen trucks. So the traffic impact and the subsequent noise and odors is way less than even industry standard for, for this type of.
Could you go back a second?
Yeah.
Now you said trucks, so is it, is it trips or trucks?
Trips.
Okay.
Trips.
So half the trucks, six to eight going to?
Correct. In and out.
Yeah, these are large, large van trucks.
Well, how many trucks, though? Do they have seven trucks, six trucks, one truck, those all the trips? How's it work?
Well, they have another, their, their primary facility, I believe, is in Brooklyn, so not everything is done out of this one location. Some trucks are there, some trucks are there. The trips is twelve to fifteen.
Where, so is there, okay, so do the trucks park there? Do they stay there overnight? How does that work?
So they, the way that they do a lot of their business is they come in on a container, and they drop the container off, and then the container stays in the loading bay for a number of, like a day or so, while they unload everything, and then load it back up. The truck comes in, hooks up, pulls out with it. So that's like your truck in and out, your trips.
Honest drawing, we don't know where the roadway is or the in and out road would be for the trucks to go.
Well, we kind of showed it to the, we kind of showed it to the planning board. They come in Glen Shaw Street, go over the railroad tracks, drive through the two, there are two buildings there that aloof has. They drive between the two buildings, and they go back to the property. They are nowhere near Western Highway, they are nowhere near Troupe Road, strictly, strictly through Glen Shaw Street.
Excuse me, I'm gonna say this once. We, there's a, I'll ask for, we'll open up the, open it up for the public to speak after the applicant has presented his case. At that time, I just ask everybody to be quiet. The court reporter has to take down people's names in case there, there's a lawsuit following this, and that's the only reason why. So thank you, I appreciate it.
So the, the proposal would be to build in two phases here? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the first phase is the one-hundred-and-nine thousand square feet?
Correct. It's the larger of the. Correct, it's the larger of the, if you want to call them two buildings, just the larger section of the building.
And what is, what is the plan? So, that piece would be built now, and is the other based on business, based on?
The utilities have to be put in, in other words, the sewer has to be put in, the drainage requirements have to be put in, the building will be built. The second area will be built, as business expands, then they would put in the second phase.
So, it's based on the expansion of the business?
That's correct.
So, and what's the height of this building going to be?
So, the building height is compliant. We have it at 38 feet.
And now, did you, are all the variances on this application? I accessed one.
No, no variances required for building height.
What about the setback going into the buffer?
No variances required for setback.
So.
This is a 50-foot rear yard setback on the north corner of the building.
So, in the ordinance, it said that the planning board can grant the, a reduction of up to 50% of the setback, and they granted the site plan preliminary approval with that reduction there, of only, it's a 35% reduction for the building.
So, the planning board already granted that?
That is correct.
35% reduction?
Correct. It's listed on the sheet three of the plan set underneath the zoning table.
So, if you only have five or six trucks a day, what is the need for the 13 loading berths in phase one?
So, to my point earlier where the container might be left for a couple days, they need to have the open spaces. A good number of the bays, I think six of them are in the future buildout, so there's only nine or, I think 11 is on the front part, which also allows for, with the way that they're positioned, for trucks to come in at different angles. If you notice, the site kind of comes in, the truck has the ability to go right when it comes in, or it can go left, and that's really dependent on where the containers might be left from the day before, or where the current order is coming from, depending on if it's ex-manufacturer that they keep, or it's going to a retailer, or if it's going to a hotel, they might operate that out of different ends of the warehouse, as opposed to traversing inside the warehouse with extra forklifts and things like that, and where the workers are. Allowing the trucks to access the different ends of the building gives them the most optimal use of the space.
How long could one of the box trucks stay there?
I think typically.
Not box trucks, sorry, how long can one of the containers stay there?
Yeah, the containers, the most is two days.
Well, we don't get tied down to that, but we believe in the average operation is two days, but sometimes you may get something, maybe three or four days. I wouldn't want to lock it into two days. I would not, I would not, because sometimes a shipment would come in, and they would have to sit there until it's ready to go out. So, but I would say no more, I don't think no greater than four days.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, understanding that this property isn't owned by Alouf, you do have to agree that this is a sensitive area for the neighbors, right?
Yes.
And second part of this, why are there no loading docks on the east side of the building? Have you considered that?
So, the east side of the building actually has an orange and rockland easement running across it, where we could put parking, but we can't put something that would be like a permanent structure, per se, like a loading dock that would have retaining walls in it, et cetera. That's the other thing that makes this property a little difficult, is it does have the orange and rockland easement on the east side, and then it has a lot of other utilities, water and gas on the south side, and then up along the rail trail side as well.
So, to the point of indoor bays, if you were to push the whole building back, you'd be able to have indoor bays on the east side?
Push the building back, which way?
To the west?
I'm not sure I follow.
You have loading docks on the west side?
We do have loading docks on the west side. If, the problem that we run into is circulation. If we were to extend the building that way, it would make for difficult access to that side of the building. As I mentioned, you know, they're looking to be able to get bays on both sides. So, the, it would really make it difficult with the rail trail and then the screening that we want to provide along that side, the easements for the utilities that are there, and then we also have, one of the requests that the planning board made and the D E M E is to maintain this natural stream that traverses the west side of the property, and so we're trying to do that as much as possible, whereas shifting the building would kind of eliminate that natural stream, a lot of the screening, and it would, you know, push it closer to the rail trail.
And the church and the school.
And the church and the school.
Well, pushing, my point is pushing the building closer to the west would open up some room on the east. It seems to me you have a blank slate here, and I don't think all the considerations were taken to try to put the bays or the docking places on the east side away from the neighbors.
Well, the biggest thing that we have really is that orange and rockland easement. I don't know that we would be, I don't see us having the space to slide the buildings west enough to get enough room for a truck to turn around and back into a loading spot.
Where is that easement? Because I don't see it.
Um.
Page three.
Do you have sheet three?
Yes.
I just want to ask Mr. Brenner something.
Yes.
Granted that 35% reduction for the buffer. I'm looking at the planning board's preliminary decision of July 12, 2017. I can't find it, I just glanced through it.
Shown right on the drawing, and they approved, shown right on the drawing, and they approved the drawing.
I'm assuming the building inspector reviewed this and referred the variances here that the building inspector deemed necessary, and that buffer is not indicated as a variance, so I, I think your representation is correct, but just note on page six of 18 in the town of Orange Town Planning Board Preliminary Site Plan Approval Decision, preliminary. Note number five makes reference to the regulations of the Orange Town Preliminary Plan, this 50-foot setback plus the 100-foot, 50-foot buffer plus 100-foot setback, no indication that the planning board is going to reduce it, which they have the power to do, by 35%. Maybe it's mentioned somewhere else here in the preliminary decision. I understand it's reflected on the drawing that the planning board reviewed and granted preliminary approval of, but perhaps it should have been spelled out also in the decision, but I just wanted to bring that out. This board is going to operate under the assumption, based upon your representation, that the planning board has granted that 35% reduction to the 100-foot buffer and 50-foot setback.
We have not asked for that variance.
Sorry?
We have not asked for that variance.
And if it turns out that that exception was not granted by the planning board, you're not receiving a variance from that regulation, so you may have to come back if it turns out that somebody's mistaken.
Okay, I'm still kind of stuck on this building location. So, if you were to rotate the building clockwise and keep the northern face of the building along the property line to Murphy Court, and slide that west, would you not open up a lot more space towards the southeast?
Well, the problem is really that, that orange and rockland easement and the other restrictions with the 50-foot, you know, buffer and, or the 100-foot buffer and the 50-foot setback, rotating it also would make the access, because what we wanted to do was get as far away from the residences up at, you know, Murphy Court as much as possible. That's why I like the buildings angled the other way, away from that, because when you come around.
Then you're moving the building away and putting trucks in closer to them.
Well, it's, if we rotated it to be parallel to that northern property line, we wouldn't be able to get the distance that we need, because we, again, we have this, you know, screening we're trying to provide on the left, the stream that we want to have there, the daylighted stream that the.
I think you missed my point. If by rotating and sliding it to the west would open up more space to put bays on the east side of the building?
Right, but what I'm saying is, we can't slide it further west because of those other items that are there, in terms of the stream, the road, and the screening that, you know, we want to provide there. And the, rotating the building still.
I mean, I'm pretty good looking at objects and rotating things. It does look like you could make it work.
The biggest, the biggest thing is really that orange and rockland easement. That's the biggest problem.
We cannot build under it.
Dan, are you talking here, are you talking south here? This is the east.
I'm talking this way. Slide it there.
This is the loading dock on the south side.
I want all the loading docks over here, yeah. Yeah, I want nothing over here. I mean, I think it would be more, I guess, less disruptive for the neighbors if there were, if the trucks were only coming in the front, not driving around the whole building. They can't go too far, right? I know.
That's the same amount as the loading dock.
I think I could make that work, I know.
This distance is the same here as here, so you could actually move it down. That says water company easement. It's not, you're saying it's a, this is Spring Valley Water.
Yes, that's Suez now, that's there.
Okay, but you're saying.
Orange and rockland.
Do they have an easement?
No, no, the slot up there is Suez water, but orange and rockland is the easement that cuts through.
Is that what that easement is? I don't see that.
It's over here.
Yeah.
I know where it is.
Yeah, it's on the side.
Think it's on the existing conditions plan? Yeah.
It's all right, I got it.
I think Suez has a pump station there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I'm not talking. I think you see some of the concerns is the outdoor loading dock in the area. I'm with Dan, as another member of the board. Well, we need to look at a different way of doing this.
Well, the thing also that would happen is, just by move, even if we rotate the building, the, that's going to put a large loop road and disturbance, because the one thing that's on this site, which you can't see on the layout plan, is the slope really rises up. So, in order to put a flat building in, and then that access road, which needs to be so wide for fire purposes, and then try to create a delay on that, the, it will probably cause more disturbance further into the existing vegetation that's in that buffer. So, a lot of the mature trees that are there would have to come down if we swung the building, you know, clockwise, so it was parallel.
Okay, my question is strictly around the loading berths. If you were to rotate, if you were to rotate and push it west, would you be able to fit those loading berths on the east side of the building?
They, the biggest thing with that is the, is the orange and rockland easement there. That would be the deterrent.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, and I can see that.
Physically, space-wise, it could probably work. The building would have to be modified. The building would have to be modified.
And my point at the beginning of this is that you're starting with a blank slate. I don't think that it's been well thought out of how to least impact the neighbors for this type of a variance. You have loading berths, outdoor loading berths, all around the building. And I mean, you know, Don, I know you've been around a long time. I don't think I've seen that anywhere, on three sides of the building.
Four sides.
And the plan.
I agree with you 100% about the outdoor loading berths. However, this many, this closely.
You've not seen it in the L.I. district. You've not seen it in the L.I.O. district, which the board's always been, in fact, we've had L.I.O. district right next to residential neighborhoods, and you've given this kind of situation. You've not seen it on the L.I. districts, because we have very limited L.I. district in this town.
Okay.
And the L.I. districts just need it, in other words, operate that way.
So, you agree with me, essentially? You're agreeing with me? I.
I, the L.I. districts I know, I know Pfizer has a tremendous amount of L.I. zoning. I know of the ones I know, I know worldwide Volkswagen, when they had the property on Greenbush Road, they have all their loading districts right against the residential neighborhood, and they're all open, too, and that's right on North Greenbush Road. So, the ones I know are all open, and it's different now today, too. These are vacuum-type closures. When this truck comes in, they're closed in a vacuum. You don't see sound, you don't see anything. They're fully enclosed, and it's way different from the old days, when you just had an open thing, and they opened up a door, and there was noise, and there was everything else. These kind of closures are modern closures today. They seal it, they don't let.
But how do you know it?
Pardon me?
I don't know that that's what's going to be installed. Just as an example.
As an example? That's how they, that's how they build them today.
I don't know if that's what's going to be.
You can stipulate it, that's how they build it today. We have no problem with stipulating that it's going to be a vacuum-type closure, we'll go along with that, because that's the way they build them today. They don't build them just open garage doors.
But the planning board must have had the same concerns, because in your preliminary site approval, item number 10 says that they recommend that the Z B A ask, require that the berths be enclosed within the building. That's item number 10.
If you take a look at it, that was from, that was changed. That was not the decision.
It's preliminary.
No, that was not the decision. There was a, there was a subsequent meeting held, and the planning board reversed it. They did not say that.
Do we have that?
They did not say that.
This is entitled Preliminary Site Plan Approval, it's dated July 12, 2017.
Yes, correct, and that was recorded, that was recorded improperly, and it was changed.
This is signed and recorded in the town clerk's office.
And I am telling you right now, it was changed, it was improperly recorded.
So, there's a subsequent, there's an amendment?
Yes, there's, there was an amendment to it, in which they said, no, we did not take a position on that. We just had a lot of stress.
Do you have a copy of that?
We have.
I will get it for you. I don't know if. Well, then she didn't give you the latest one, because they changed it, because we minutes, they changed it, because that's not what the planning board said. The planning board was under a lot of.
So, you're telling me that there's an amended preliminary site plan approval from the planning board?
There was, there was a sentence that changed that, that was not what the planning board agreed upon.
Right, but you say a sentence was changed. This is a legal document.
Okay, Dennis, I am telling you something now, just listen to me.
Don, I'm just trying to get clear for the record, what the planning board is recommending in the preliminary site plan approval. We have the legal document he has signed and filed in the town clerk's office. If there's a subsequent amendment to this, then that's, that's fine, that's, that's okay, but.
There is a.
We need to have it, we need to have it.
Quite frankly, I don't think it really matters if it's on paper. I mean, that's just kind of a redundant statement, anyway. That is exactly why we're here and what we do. So, whether it was said or not, it might as well have been said and put on paper.
Well, it's okay.
Because that's why we're here, this is what we're looking at.
But it's not what was said.
That's fine, let's carry on.
Just recently, we've had at least two applications from large companies that redesigned their building to move the loading docks as far away as possible from the residences.
What we were trying to do with this initial design was keep the disturbance as far away from the residences.
I entirely disagree with that, Steve. You have loading berths on every side that there's residences.
Well, I'm saying disturbance.
And you're talking about your loop road? The loop road has going to have trucks driving around.
Yeah, I'm saying removal of existing vegetation and buffer and natural features. That's what we're trying to maintain as much as possible.
Okay.
Because of where the loading docks are, you know, if that is the primary concern, as opposed to the removal of the, you know, potential 100-foot buffer that's there.
So we want both. Everybody just we want both.
I understand that. We have preliminary site plan approval for this building. There's a prior approval for a larger building that has external loading. That site plan has that.
But the surrounding conditions were different at that time.
I understand, but correct me if I'm wrong, Don, they could build that.
They could build that building. Yes, they can. It's much larger and it's much more environmentally disturbing.
But they don't necessarily have to have outside loading berths?
They have outside loading berths.
No, I'm not saying that, but that, they could build the building-
With outside loading berths.
Well, that was approved.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm saying that's what was approved back then. But-
I think if you look at the land, I think Jesse's really, he's trying to minimize land disturbance. Land disturbance would be more of a problem to the neighborhood than-
The location of the docks.
Than the location of a loading dock, which will be used maybe twice a day or something like that. This is, and with these vacuum closures, it's, that is minimum disturbance. If you start moving the amount of ground that you're going to move to do with what we're thinking about, it would be much more of an environmental problem.
Well, in looking at the previous decision that's proved that you can build today, I disagree with that. There's a lot of macadam on this plant. You're basically paving the entire footprint.
Well, we could have up to 80% lot coverage with 50%.
Which is what you have for 2004. Sorry, just a reference. I'm looking at the plan from 2004.
2002 had 252 parking spaces approved. This project has 75 parking spaces approved. We've dropped 200 and somewhat parking spaces. That's a lot of macadam that's not being built.
So now, walk with me for a second, right? So, considering that, in my mind, it's, I don't think you'd be disrupting anymore if you were to put the loading berths on, if you were able to put the loading berths on the east side. You were gonna, you could essentially mow down all those trees anyway.
Make it flat and paved.
Yeah.
I'm having a problem understanding what you're saying.
Because you wouldn't have any dirt, you wouldn't have ground trees or anything left if you built the original building with all the macadam. That's what he's saying.
That's correct.
The entire lot's macadam.
But this is, but this is not the case here. We've changed it.
I know, I know. So I'm asking, I, again, 13 years ago, very different circumstances.
Right. And so, it sounds like what you're saying is the board would rather the more disturbance, more coverage to accommodate relocating the lot, the loading docks to the east.
Well, the board is saying absolutely the opposite of that. But yes, that's what I asked you.
But that's what you're getting. I know, I know you're asking.
Like Mike said, wants both. Right.
Right, right.
And I also, I'm just curious what that option is.
I mean, in looking at it 2D, can the, do the dimensions work to do it?
Do the dimensions work to do 12 outdoor loading berths instead of 19 or 22? If that's the case, I'm more inclined to look at 12.
12 with this, with our current layout, or?
No, 12 with my layout. My beat-up layout.
They really like the flexibility of the extra berths to be able to have the containers left there and still maneuver other trucks in and out.
So perhaps you could make the building smaller.
Well, you know, also make it larger. They can buy, they can buy the existing map and make it quite large.
You're here because you want a smaller building and so we're talking about making it smaller.
Well, we're here because this particular client doesn't need the larger building. But they need this size building. They do need this size building and they're prepared to expend a large amount of money to do it. The question, which I think should be looked at, what is the basic disturbance of these loading docks? What is the disturbance of these? Okay, I'm sorry. The question is what? Okay, what is the basic disturbance of the loading docks on the area? I mean, you have a number of loading docks that are going to be used very infrequent and they're going to be used during the day and they're going to be used just during the weekday to get an operation to work within an economic feasible limits in which the client is now coming in, reducing the size of the building, reducing the size of the parking spaces and make, and he's prepared, which he will, we are prepared to go before the architectural review board, install serious fences and high trees to actually screen this so that the bordering areas will not be disturbed. I mean, we've got a program here to really install very large trees and fences to protect the residents. This is a serious investment, a serious invest, and these people want to be good neighbors. They're not looking to be, they do not produce odors, they do not produce anything. They are using the land, which is what it's zoned for, and they, they will be good neighbors based on the fact that they're working just on weekdays and they're working only within limited hours. And that's, and they will put in these pressure things that you're talking about. Connections.
And what's the cost to actually enclose these bays?
So, the cost of construction on the low side would probably be like $120 per square foot. And to enclose these bays, it would probably be about 25,000 square feet of building added on, which would be roughly about $3 million if you multiplied it out. That's before factoring in any ventilation costs that are required for, that are special required for the indoor fumes.
So, did I hear you say before, I think I did, that they, in phase one piece, you don't need all 13 bays? Did you say something? You said nine before. Am I correct?
I was just doing the math quick in my head, but yes, it would be the 13 that are there.
So not the nine you said before?
Right. I miscounted the ones on the phase two.
The four on the side away from the houses.
Sorry, you said, can you redo that math? You said $100, $120 a square foot.
Yeah.
2,500 square feet?
25,000.
20,000.
Yeah, zero. Again, two, I just wanted to finish my point from four, like, two dimensionally, looking at just, you know, a layout plan without taking into consideration the grade of the site. You're right, it is, you're right, it is, it is a blank slate to some degree. But when you factor in full site planning things such as grading and stormwater, utilities, lighting the site, things like that, it becomes very difficult. And what we wanted to do in going from, you know, it wasn't necessarily a straight-up blank slate because there was the 2004 approval, which they looked at and said, okay, this was what was approved, this large building oriented in this fashion. Granted, those homes weren't built at that time, but what we wanted to do was get a lot of the disturbance, you know, physical ground, tree removal, you know, grading, land disturbance away from that northwest corner of the property as much as possible. So that's why all the parking got relocated to the south side for the cars. The loading docks were, a couple were left on the north side just as was the previous approval. The closest loading docks are really directly across from the water company land.
On the north, on the north.
On the north side. So, that was kind of like the thinking. It wasn't necessarily, we have this blank slate. It was, okay, this template was previously approved. We're going to pull back in the areas that were most sensitive to the prior approval in terms of, and considering where the homes came in, in that northwest corner. So, that was kind of the thinking and trying to keep it to the southeast, you know, as much as possible, but still understanding the elevation is the highest on the north side. It runs down to the south side and that's where the stormwater's going to go, that's where the sewer's going to go. So, we do have to take into account those other aspects of site planning. It's not just 2D, this is where the setbacks are, you can push your building anywhere you, anywhere you want. That was, that was really what led to this design. Are there other alternatives that could be explored? Yes. But they do come with their own set of issues and kind of trade-offs. You know, pushing the building to the north, aligning it parallel with the northern property line is going to, is going to result in further disturbance in that area.
Can you move some of the loading berths from the west side down to the south side?
That's something we would have to check with the applicant themselves. I know they, you know, as part of their current business model, that's what they, what they want. The south side would really be constructed at a potential future later date. So they might not get to use those, those bays at the initial set, set out.
These loading docks, you've got 22. Are they made to the internal portion of the building that's accessible to the loading docks? Is that the reason why you have so many around?
We don't have 22.
22, 19.
They're set at, the elevation is like four foot lower than the finished floor of the warehouse. So, the cab or the, excuse me, the trailer can back up and be level with that first floor. And then it's the accessing side.
But the loading docks are made so that the, they can get it to the section of the building that they want to get to.
Correct.
We don't have 22. We have 19.
19, it says.
We have 19. We don't have 22.
The posting said 22. The plan says 19.
There were, as far as I'm, no, there were, there were no variants. It had final approval. It just never-
Final planning approval.
Yes, it did.
Final second approval, yeah.
Yes. Why did it come with 22? This don't hurt.
So really, really what we're looking at is this plan with a smaller building and that's it? We usually have a little compromise and I'm not hearing any. We usually have a little compromise. I'm just wondering if-
Well, I think what we're trying to compromise based on the fact of heavy fencing, trees.
There is a, so on the left hand, on the west side of the building, there's kind of the bump out that has the loading docks on both sides. What we could do is potentially do something similar on the north side where it's the closest that would pull the loop road out of the buffer. So, it would essentially be kind of like rotating those docks so they wouldn't be, you know, directly facing north-south. They'd be facing east-to-west. And since they do have the four-foot grade, we would certainly be amenable to putting up like, you know, an extended privacy wall or fence or something like that that would essentially shield those sides, you know, the north-facing side of those lots. I think, yeah. Actually, I think I have that in the plan. I have it planned like that. So, this is the plan that's currently in the board with the loading spaces north-south over here. So you can, you know, your view is right there. And you can see where the, you know, loop road to allow the trucks to turn around kind of approaches into the buffer. We have a plan here where that, there would be a little extension of the building coming out. But then you can turn the loading docks this way and then we can put, you know, privacy fence and walls here, screening on this side. And then you know the loop road is able to stay completely outside of the buffer. We would still propose large trees, fencing, screening as much as possible here and along the rail trail side. But that was one that we kind of were kicking around to because we were still in the, avoid as much of the disturbance to the buffer as possible. So, this was kind of an alternate 2D thing that we looked at that would still allow the trucks to access this part of the building and potentially provide, you know, some hard screening like a privacy wall that could make it to be look like the building or something else.
Have you still four bays?
Uh, yeah. What's that?
It's still four bays. It doesn't look like four.
Yeah, four right here. And we could potentially, you know, you know, do three and two on the other side or something because it would allow for a double, double side. So, this is really just a schematic, but this is like, just an idea.
So would you take one off the other side? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so what, what they were doing was if they, they would pull one from over here to over here or, you know, put more over here. What, they would like to have at least four in this spot for this access, but if you want to do five here and one less over here, you know, we can, we can work out that math. I have a-
I'll show them. You have a sketch?
Yeah, I have a, I have a small version. Again, it's a sketch, so there's nothing, you know, definitive of numbers. We just wanted to show where this, the evidence could be. For example, we could also, you know, potentially extend the road a little bit and, you know, even beef up the screening or the wall that gets put there so it hides it more. Like right now, we just did it as tight as possible trying to keep disturbance down. But if, you know, we're making it look like the major inside, you know, a wall, certainly can do that. can, can do that. Yeah, no, it's...
Tell me, tell me, did you give them one?
Yeah, I just, I just had...
Chairman, do you need another? I have another copy, you want another copy?
I think, no, it's made its rounds. Just call...
Do you want it back?
Um, yeah, that's fine.
Actually, you know, John and I didn't look at it and...
So, I, I can leave the full-size one?
Let's make it one of the regular ones. You looked at it, it's...
We'll keep this one, we don't need the full-size.
You actually give it to Debbie.
Okay.
Debbie, I circled it.
Just, just note Debbie, uh, submitted that 76.
How many, uh, loading docks were in your 2002 plan?
There were 15. There were 15 loading docks and 252 parking spaces.
How many parking spaces now?
How many now? 75.
Total?
Okay, at this point I'll open up the public portion of the meeting. So just please form a line, just stand behind the podium. Again, state your name and address for the court reporter. Everyone will be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman, before I give my present, uh, my statement, I have a statement signed onto by 132 of our neighbors. I was hoping I could get more than the allotted two minutes to read it.
Uh, sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Alex Gad, A-L-E-X-G-A-D-D. My address is 8 Murphy Court in Blauville.
And ju- just for the record, it's the exception because I don't want 132 people reading the same.
Exactly, and that's what'll happen.
No, some people hold me to the two minutes, so...
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Please, please raise your right hand. Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Gad. I live at 8 Murphy Court, Blauville, New York, 10913, and my family and I have done so since 2012. My home is almost immediately adjacent to the project proposed by Lennon Choice. I'm concerned about a number of impacts this project may have on the character of my neighborhood, my property specifically, and my family's quality of life. As the board knows, the touchstone of an application for a variance is an alleged hardship the project sponsor would suffer if the zoning law was strictly applied. In the case of an area variance, the decision to grant or deny involves the weighing of the variance's benefits to the applicant against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare the variance would place in the neighborhood and community. In making this decision, or making its decision, the board must consider five factors related to the alleged hardship. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. My statement tonight will address the criteria to the extent possible. However, unfortunately, I'm unable to address fully the application tonight because the documents on file with the town do not contain some basic supporting information from the applicant. As an example, the documents do not explain the nature of the alleged hardship. The applicant has not documented, for instance, the nature of the hardship it alleges it would suffer if the loading berths were enclosed until we heard something tonight. Similarly, there are no documents on file which explain what efforts of any the applicant has made to achieve the benefits sought in the variance request by other methods. The applicant has not explained the extent to which it examined other sites for its warehouse or if its operation or site plan could be modified to avoid the need for the variances. To the extent that these and other more, other important information is submitted at tonight's hearing, I request that the hearing be continued at a future date so that I and other affected residents can review this information and provide appropriate input. Otherwise, the public has not been given a fair opportunity to provide comments and influence a decision that affects our homes and quality of life. I would also note that the applicant has the burden to demonstrate that the issuance of a variance is war, of variances is warranted. Therefore, if it does not provide adequate explanation of the hardship or of its efforts to achieve the sought-after benefits through other methods, this board should find against the applicant. Personally, if this application's approved, the impact would be extensive, not just to me and my family, but to the, our entire neighborhood, including Cottage Lane, uh, elementary school, Tappan Zee High School, Dominican College, St. Catherine's Church and School, as well as anyone trying to enjoy the newly constructed rail trail. The negative impacts would include, first of all, noise, a significant impact in increased noise, tractor-trailers pulling in and out at any time of day or night, regardless of what was stated here tonight, because there's no way to restrict that operation once these, uh, the building is built and is in operation, complete with engine noise revving, air brakes engaging, all would occur on the residential side of the factory as little as 100 feet away with the loop road. Additionally, open loading bays being petitioned for would create even more noise, regardless of what Mr. Brenner says. All of this while the wooded area that currently exists to buffer the sounds of aloof would be largely removed, leaving almost no buffer to absorb the additional noise. Backyard barbecues, catches with our children, biking or walking with our families or walking our, our dogs, all this would be ruined by the potentially consistent and constant noise, all of which is possible given that there are no restrictions on when this factory could be in operation. Since the applicant seeks to have this board approve open loading berths, which is prohibited practice under the town zoning law, it should be obligated to study the impacts and to demonstrate that they won't cause a problem in the community. There's nothing in the application that does either of those. The second big impact is air pollution. Additional pollution introduced by tractor-trailers pulling into this very secluded area in the back of this new proposed property that borders the residential zone of their property would increase the already unhealthy air that we've established has been caused by aloof. Our health has to be protected above the interests of any corporation, and there is no other way to interpret the impact of these trucks than to recognize that the air quality would get worse. These impacts lead to one underlying issue. Property values would be adversely affected by the project, and impacts will only be hurt worse if variances are granted. Your job as a zoning board of appeals is to protect our property values above those of a corporation. I cannot see how you, any of you can say that the introduction of this warehouse or factory will do anything other than to devalue the properties between Cottage Lane and Mountain View Road, from Western Highway and Points West to Moyzen Road and Points East, and that is unacceptable to me. All of the variances sought are substantial. Every single one of them seeks the maximum variance from the legal requirements. The variance from the frontage requirement does not seek a reduced road frontage. In some cases, it seeks to have the project approved with no road frontage. The same reasoning applies to the variance from Town Law, Section 280-a. In addition, the applicant seeks the construction of 19 loading berths, all of which it seeks to place outdoors in contravention of the zoning law. The zoning law prohibits even a single loading dock from being so located. It's also clear that any alleged hardship is self-created. Lennon Choice knew full well that the items it seeks relief from were prohibited by law, and yet it still intentionally chose to pursue the project nonetheless. In short, Lennon Choice is not the victim of the zoning law. It created the problem by pursuing a project knowing from the outset that aspects of it were prohibited by law. In closing, I wish to bring to the ZBA's attention that its sister agency, the Town Planning Board, in its decision to approve the preliminary site plan, stated its opposition to granting the variance for the outdoor loading berths. In the July 12, 2017 decision, Condition 10, on page seven, it stated, "The planning board recommends to the zoning board of appeals that the loading berths be enclosed within the building." Thank you for the opportunity to provide, provide comments on this variance application, and I look forward to providing additional comments, uh, at a continuation of this hearing. On behalf of all of us, thank you very much.
And just a point of record, there, there is an approved plan. If we don't approve this tonight, we deny it, that approved plan can be built. So what we're up against are two options. One, to build a smaller warehouse with more buffering, or they can build the original plan as it was, as it was approved. Please, yeah, yeah. So I, because I am curious, I am curious about everybody's input on these two options that we have.
I understand.
And again, another point, just to clarify, the 280A and the zero-foot front road, that is not self-created, that's actually, uh, the actual, whoever created the zoning map. So actually, 288 law doesn't require our approval, as far as I understand it.
Landlocked properties and...
Flag lots are...
Section 280A reflects that landlocked properties have a right, to summarize simply, have a right to access the nearest public highway, roadway, street. And New York State Town Law 280A addresses that. It does say that the variance to allow access from a landlocked property requires approval from the zoning board of appeals under New York State Town Law, Section 280A, that's all. This has to do with access to a landlocked property.
Understood, but they could have access to the property without, where they're looking for the variance with zero frontage is around the, around the ring road. They could have access to the front of the property with no ring road. I mean, there are ways to address that.
There's other purposes.
Yeah, the only way that they would be able to, to have frontage, which is another way of looking at it, abutting a public highway, roadway, or public thoroughfare, is if they acquired land owned by someone else, or perhaps, unless aloof, aloof real properties, whoever the record owner is of this property owns land that connects to, let's say, Route 303 or another public highway or street, that would be the only way to have frontage on a public thoroughfare, is if they were deed in title touched a public thoroughfare. Because none of their deeded real property took, it's landlocked, they need a 280A variance, that's all.
But they could abide without the variance if they built a smaller building? Let's all agree with that.
I'm sorry?
They can't?
Even if they built, if they built a snack shack, you know, of, of 500 square feet, they would still need the New York State Town Law 280A variance.
Okay, my, my, I correct, I stand corrected.
So what we're looking at are really just the, the one variance we're looking at is the outdoor loading docks.
Okay, well...
And, and again, it's those two options, so I am curious for you to weigh in.
Well, my, my feeling about that is that it feels like that's the choice, but to me, that seems like a false choice. We've had the 200, the larger factory theoretically on the books since 2004, they've never built it because no one's buying it. So we're talking about this or nothing, which would be the continuation of what's happened before. No one's talking about building that, except as a threat to get this exact plan through, and that's our perception of it. And thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Name and address?
Anthony Lopafido, 30 North Troop Road.
Spell that last name?
L-O-P-E-R, Ephesid Frank, I, Dezen David O., 30 North Troop Road.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
The approved 2004 warehouse, uh, these are the things that did not exist back in 2004. There wasn't a Lowe's, there wasn't a Stop &amp; Shop, the Murphy Court houses weren't built yet, there was no FedEx warehouse on 303, and there was no rail trail. I used to work part-time, uh, down at Bradley Park at a company called ADS, uh, right on 303. That building is 219,000 square feet with a height of 29 feet. That building only had six truck bays that were enclosed. What they want is enough truck bays, three times that. Now, they're claiming that there's only gonna be six or seven trucks coming in and out, they haven't said how many trucks are gonna be parked there overnight. So, yeah, they can have six trucks come and go, but if you're permanently having six trucks there, that can be added, at one point, there could be 12 trucks parked there. They're saying they're not, they're not associated with aloof. My question is, how close is that building that they're proposing to aloof? Because I think at one point, somebody said that, well, what happens if down the road, Lennon Choice decides to sell back their property that they already constructed, the warehouse, to aloof? And we all know that aloof for years have been trying to expand their, their warehouse. So aloof's tried to get multiple additions to the warehouse of truck bays, and this would basically, in this session, give them another 18 truck bays. They're saying that they need the current, their current building size needs to be this big, they have a building in Brooklyn, I'd like to know how big that building is, uh, how big that warehouse is, that they're claiming that they need this size to do their job. Uh, and, uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Liz Dudley, 250 South Green Bush Road in Orangeburg. Liz Dudley, 250 South Green Bush Road, Orangeburg. Um, I'm coming in here today to, oh, you have to first, do you have to do this thing?
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
All right, something's wrong with the timer, I don't know how to use it.
I'll keep it short. Um, I'm coming as a concerned parent, as a taxpayer, and as an active community member. When we built the rail trail, um, instead of becoming, you know, a great place for families to go enjoy themselves, it actually opened up, um, for aloof odors to travel out of their area and for approximately 700 odor complaints to go on over the last year. I'm concerned because we live across from, um, this proposed development, and I'm worried what's gonna happen when they cut down all those trees. Um, I don't know if it's possible to do an environmental study, um, I don't know if you can do something about, you know, soil testing, water testing, it would be nice to even have that soil there tested to see what's in it. I'm just concerned that something this big, more traffic, it's becoming, I mean, it's an industrial area, and I, I think that doesn't go, um, for the church, for the school, for the college, I just don't think it is, you know, a welcome addition to our neighborhood. I'm actually really upset to see that Mr. Brenner is the lawyer for Lennon Choice because that's probably the worst choice they could have made. Um, he's the same person that stood up and said, you know, that the air was fine coming from aloof, and that's not the case. He also stood up here during many town board meetings and...
Excuse me, can you please keep your comments to the, uh, application, not the attorney?
Okay, sorry. Um, I'm just concerned with the truths coming out when people tell you things what you're supposed to believe. That's why I brought it up, not to, you know, because we have to believe what he's saying, but I, I don't think, I think we have to dig deeper. And I hope that whatever does happen, you spell it out and hold them accountable, because it seems like the boards have a hard time holding each other accountable to the decisions. So that's, that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Thomas Woods, 10 Chestnut Oval, Orangeburg, New York.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Um, you'll have to forgive me, I'm not as an eloquent speaker as my wife is a writer. Um, however, one of the points I wanted to make is, um, a variation of zero, which is the current code for these loading docks, would be one or two. 19 is a deviation, and a great deviation at that. Um, I understand that there is a concern for enclosing the docks with ventilation. Well, the current owners of that property are already having their, uh, problems with ventilation, so I don't see why ventilation would be anything different with this new property. Idling trucks, diesel fumes, the noise that's produced just by backing up into a, a dock, staging up container trucks to load on and off. I've actually loaded these container trucks, and it can be done in less than two hours with a forklift. I've done it in three hours with just a pallet jack. So staging the trucks there overnight is not a requirement, it's actually more of a convenience. So, um, I think that having these loading docks exposed with all the noise and the, the truck drivers themselves going in and out with loud motors is gonna be more of a nuisance to the town. Secondly, the 2004 application that was already approved, um, I believe the property owners themselves have changed the dynamic of the neighborhood by selling to higher-guiley homes and improving the quality of the, the neighborhood. You have a residential area now that has been contributing in tax dollars to the community. So far, uh, the current property owners that are trying to do this sale have caused nothing but problems for the community. So, uh, I actually beg you guys to deny any and all variances for this, and maybe review why there's an application still on the books that's over 13 years old. Don't these expire at all? I mean, we've gone through three presidential, um, administrations. I mean, I don't know why something like this would have to stay on the books that long. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rafael Kanesov from 18 Spruce Street in Orangeburg.
So I actually beg you guys to deny any and all variances for this, and maybe review why there's an application still on the books that's over 13 years old. Don't these expire at all? I mean, we've gone through three presidential administrations. I mean, I don't know why something like this would have to stay on the books that long. Thank you.
My name is Rafael Kaniza, from 18 Spruce Street in Orangeburg, New York. C-A-N-I-Z-A.
I'm sorry, you're addressing 18...
18 Spruce Street.
Thank you.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My comment is, may seem like a silly question or silly comment, but that whole industrial area, we have our town officials struggling to enforce codes in that entire area by not just Aloof, but by other companies. My question is, how can you allow a company to come in, in that same industrial area to, again, to add more work for our town officials that they cannot handle? They don't have... It feels though they don't have... We don't have the know-how, we don't have the expertise to enforce any kind of operation that may go on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Whittek, and my address is 109 Newport Avenue in Tepan. And I would like to speak to the fol... Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to the following factors, which the ZBA must take into consideration in making its determination. Number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be produced in the granting of an area variance. And two, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The area we're discussing is home to many private homes, as we've heard, but we're also talking about significant landmarks in our community. The town rail trail, St. Catherine's Church, the Bloavelt Library, these are all things that are right in that area. These are all places that hundreds, if not thousands, of Orange Town residents spend a great deal of quality time with their family. This is a significant problem, which affects a wide cross-section of Orange Town. When my children were little, they spent hours of their lives playing on the St. Catherine's playground and attending the family programs at the Bloavelt Library, and this happened during the weekdays. It didn't just happen on the weekends. You know, Mr. Brenner was talking about the week... You know, the weekdays, but that's when kids are using these facilities. To imagine these peaceful places destroyed by the disruptive noise of 19 open loading docks is not only undesirable, it is a tragedy for this community. The noise pollution is a serious issue, as is the existing air pollution problem in this immediate area. As the ZBA is aware, I'm sure, the concerns around noxious odors emitted from Aloof remain unresolved, and this cannot be disconnected from this application. I'll be submitting a statement, which was signed by 260 residents and submitted last week to the town board, and I'll also submit a statement, which was written by air pollution scientists regarding the ambient air test from the summer and fall in the area of this application. These statements demonstrate the serious concerns residents have with elevated levels of compounds such as benzene, acrylene, carbon tetra chloride, and hexachlorobutadine in the results. Many residents are concerned about adding additional traffic and pollution to this area, which is home to South Orange Town schools, several preschools, and Dominican College. The ZBA is charged with protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Please consider carefully the impact that this could have on the unresolved and ongoing environmental crisis in this neighborhood. We ask that you listen to the substantial concerns we have and deny granting these substantial variances to this applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Gad, you mentioned that you were submitting a petition with over 100 signatures. Did you make that part of the record?
No.
Would you please give the head of the table?
Thank you.
And also, Ms. Whittek, are you submitting a petition?
She did. She submitted it, asking for the opening on the first line of the order, which might be...
Sorry.
Sister Mary Eileen O'Brien, president of Dominican College.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I have one simple question, and then I'll make a statement. We're talking about the development of this new structure. Has Aloof sold the property? Is the property no longer Aloof's property?
It's in contract to be sold. I'm guessing one of the contingencies in the contract of sale is that the prospective purchaser of Linen Choice, whatever the legal entity is of Linen Choice, obtains all municipal approvals that may be necessary to construct what it is they're proposing. It's a private contract of sale. That's my speculation, based upon what Mr. Brenner stated in his opening comments.
The reason I asked that question, it really came to my mind while I was listening here, because many of the concerns I bring forth have to do with the environmental concerns that have arisen and been published with regard to Aloof, and in a sense, this property is not yet sold from Aloof to this new group. That's just a fact. And I would just like to speak... Many people have already spoken of the families and the culture and the church. The college has approximately 2,000 students, and we use it seven days a week. Much of the college abuts the rail to trail, and hence, we're the closest neighbors, it would seem, for a good part of what we're talking about tonight. So we've been concerned in the past, when the environmental issues come up, we certainly would be concerned in the future, so pollution and safety and things of that nature. Another question that came to my mind, and I'm not an environmental engineer at all, but I heard a mention made of streams and changing the directions and things of that nature. I'm just so conscious, St. Dominic's Convent is across the street, and they have a big pond there, and then there are structures that go under the street, and then it goes into the college, and we have a pond there, and then it goes across, and it keeps continuing. So I think that's something that we all should look at. Where will this water end up? And if it's restructured, might it have an adverse effect?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Johnson, 15 Theodore Roosevelt Drive, Bloavelt.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
When I learned about the four houses for sale on Murphy Court, it shook me to my core, and it brings me here tonight. Four families are uprooting their lives and evacuating, no doubt, because they feel it would be intolerable to live near the proposed development of a Linen Choice warehouse with 19 open loading docks. The air in this neighborhood and the surrounding vicinity, including the preschools, Dominican College, Cottage Lane Elementary School, as well as this Joseph Clark Rail Trail, is already a health threat. It is saturated with carcinogenic and mutagenic chemicals, according to the DEC. Exposures to emissions from tractor trailers will only compound the current air pollution problem in our community. My family lives a mile from the rail trail. When it opened, the entrance to the path felt welcoming, so we happily rode our bikes and walked our dog. In the summer, we liked how the canopy of trees made the trail dark and inviting. It appeared to be a welcome place to get out of the heat, to spend some quality time outside together. Soon enough, though, we became aware of the noxious odors lurking in the air and cut our outing short, and our walker rides were ruined. We learned to avoid the path when the factory is operating to limit breathing of the fumes. We should not be forced to yield our right to recreation, respiration, and residence to a manufacturer that operates in our town, nor shall we allow a new facility to compromise our health, safety, and quality of life. We do not need another neighbor like Aloof. The board has the right to deny variances to Linen Choice. I wanted to add something. I last spoke to Sister at the water... There was a water symposium at Dominican College, and her points about the groundwater, and, you know, if something's in the air, it's going to seep into the ground, and an earlier speaker asked about, you know, environmental impact statement. I think that's a wonderful route to look into. I thank the board for your service and for... We hope you make the right decision on behalf of your residences. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Janine Fiala Davis, preschool playhouse, 557 Western Highway.
Fiala F-Zid Frank, I-A-L-A, Davis, D-A-V-I-S. Preschool playhouse, 557 Western Highway.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was not my intention to talk tonight, but after hearing everyone, feel that we have to. The state mandates that the children play outside for X amount of time each day, and we are fearful that they won't want to do so, and that it won't be safe for them to do so regarding the air quality, the idle trucks, the diesel fuel, the noise factor. Our main concern is the health and welfare of the students that we have. We have about 130 kids on our roster that are there at the same operating hours, on the same days of the week that they mentioned earlier, and obviously, we want them to be as safe as possible. Personally, my son uses that rail trail every day, and I wouldn't want him doing that with all of this going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monsinia Francis Macree, M-C, capital A-R-E-E. I'm at 523 Western Highway.
I didn't get the spell.
M-C, capital A-R, double E. I'm the pastor of St. Catherine of Alexandria in Bloavelt, and my concerns are those that...
Sorry, Father.
Sorry.
I'm going to have to say Hallel Mary. Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My concerns are the same as most others that have been voiced, especially the health of our children, our Seawayo children, our preschool children, our religious education program, the health and well-being and quality of life of our neighbors, Dominican College, and all things that could be adversely affected. So I would recommend as the pastor that these variances not be granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. I just had a couple of questions and comments regarding this. It's my belief that this board should deny any variances that are requested tonight. But I did have a question in a letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning Acting Commissioner dated June 19th, and it was addressed to the planning board, which I understand is a different board, but it recommends a modification, which states that the applicant must obtain any necessary permits from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's Division of Air Resources for the proposed facility. So what I'm wondering is, how does this modification relate to the facility and what their proposed use is? Why would the acting commissioner request this? And if there are necessary permits to be obtained from the air division, then isn't there a possibility that what's proposed may also fall under performance standards through the zoning board? Can the applicant explain in full detail?
Sorry, just to interrupt you. Yes, this is not a performance standards review.
Correct.
All air quality stuff has not been done by us yet. That's done during performance standards.
So they would have to come back again if they're...
For performance standards.
I don't know if that's...
If it qualifies. I mean, if it was just a warehouse, then likely...
Okay, because one of the questions that I had was, can they explain what the light manufacturing would be conducted there? Because in a social media post by Supervisor Lett Chris Day, it was alluded to that some of this packaging in the warehouse that was... That would be divided and distributed then, so we're wondering if machines that would be used to heat seal any of the new packaging, and if that was what the commissioner was talking about in his recommendations. And then also, at the July 12th planning board meeting, just for the record, Chairman Garvey did tell the applicant in regards to the outdoor loading berths, quote, "So put them inside," end quote, were saying they should be enclosed, and this was transcribed today. So those were mentioned by Chairman Garvey from the planning board. And although I'm aware that you're separate boards, the planning board seemed to not... Would not have given preliminary approval to this if the applicant demanded that the berths be located outside on that night. And also, the planning board did not have pertinent air quality results when they issued a NEG deck, because this board needs to take a closer look at all the environmental issues surrounding this facility before making a decision on the variance requests. Because in 2004, ambient air sampling in this area was not conducted around the site, and due to the continuous noxious odors from Aloof plastics, recent data provided by TRC Solutions taken from the surrounding neighborhoods has shown that chemical concentrations of benzene, acrylene have exceeded the New York State DEC annual and short-term guidelines. This must be taken into account when deliberating whether or not to allow 19 or 22 open loading berths with an undocumented amount of tractor trailers entering and exiting this facility, combined with the possibility of idling trucks. Emissions from benzene and acrylene emissions from additional tractor trailers will only exacerbate the chemical concentrations in the surrounding area. This may have a negative impact.
Sorry, your two minutes are running long. Can you wrap it up?
Okay, sure. And just one other question. According to Orange Town Town Code, Chapter 21A-14, Section D, it states that if within two years after the final site plan approval has been granted by the planning board, no building permits have been issued, and/or performance bonds have been furnished to the town of Orange Town for construction of public improvements, the final site plan approval decision of the planning board shall be deemed to be rescinded, and no permits shall be issued unless and until a new site plan has been approved in accordance with the Town of Orange Town Site Plan Regulation. So my question is, would this stipulation that's in the town code apply to the original Aloof real property approval from 2004? So that no comparisons may be made?
Okay, now you're really running along.
Okay, so that's the question. So that no comparisons may be made between...
Okay, we got it.
...the applications, given that Linen Choice is an entirely new applicant? Thank you.
Dimitri Lattis, Piermont, 31 Liberty Street, Piermont.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for reading into the record our physician and health professional statement with regards to the air pollution in the area. I think it's really important to take that into consideration, not only for the residents in terms of the impact of this, but you're talking about additional employees coming in to the area. You're going to... These folks are proposing a plan of a factory, warehouse, bringing in additional people directly adjacent to a toxic source. That, to me, is irresponsible. Clean up the source, then let's talk. I also have a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture. I moved on to medicine after that. Looking at this plan, I have to say, I am not impressed. There's a lot of things that are not thought out. And I want to compliment Mr. Sullivan on... You're picking up on a lot of the alternatives, different orientations that would be much better fitting to a plan. Certainly, a building of that size is not the right thing for this site. Looking at the recreation next to there, the residential next to there, it makes no sense to do this kind of a plan, butted right up against the rail trail with tractor trailers rolling in. What, we're going to have like a tractor trailer park right up against a residential area, right up against a rail trail without any real mitigation? I mean, I know we're talking about fences and trees, but in reality, this is a major impact, 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 impact. That's what we're talking about. Every aspect of this is just impacting. And second... Lastly, I should say, we've been told that this will be a good neighbor. What kind of neighbor comes in threatening? You walk into a neighborhood and you say, "Hey, let me do this, or else." That's not a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Iris Steinberg, S-T-E-I-N-B-E-R-G, 10 Murphy Court.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So in preliminary approval, Tom Brenner references the fact that there was a 25% reduction in buffer. I've yet to see that in preliminary approval. There was no reduction in buffer. So on the side, they're building entirely wooden the buffer on the rail trail side, as well as on the north-facing side. And I don't know, you know, obviously, they should be requiring different variances. On the northeast side, they're entirely with a 100-foot buffer of the residential property, so obviously, there should be variances, you know, they would need variances on that. So I just want to know, is, you know, these variances are important variances. I don't think there should be reduction in setback at all? And it might not be a hazard to their workers' health, but it's a hazard to my health and everybody here, and all the residents of Blauvelt. Everybody uses that rail trail. I lost my notes. I would like to also say, I've been in the landscape industry for over 25 years, and they're trying to block a 38-foot building with fences and trees. I'd like to know what size trees they're planning on using, what the growth rate is, because I don't know of too many plants, especially, they're gonna put evergreens, which will help block noise, and maybe some of the smell, that grow more than a foot a year or so. So, it's gonna take a long time for a 12-foot tree to become 38 feet. And also, for the residents on the north side, 'cause I think they said that's the higher elevation, they're gonna be looking down towards the building. So, it's not gonna get blocked for maybe 30 years. So, that's a concern for all of us, I think. I would like to know what the distance is. They mentioned distances to the church and the college. What's the distance to the rail trail? Especially where the trucks will be in the parking area or the turnaround area to the rail trail. Real quick, they said Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, that's Memorial Day, Labor Day, Fourth of July, Father's Day, Mother's Day. All could be potentially on weekdays, when we'll be using our backyards or be using the rail trail, and being disturbed by their lack of disturbance that they're trying to produce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Maguire, M.A.J., U.I.R.E., 31 Arthur Street, Blauvelt.
Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. I do. Don't have a statement as much as a question. The building proposes 119,000 square feet, right? So, allowing 20,000 square feet for office space, that's 100,000 square feet of storage. One trailer is about 500 to 600 square feet. It would take 100 trailers to fill that place. 200 trailers. At six trailers a day, in and out, that, to me, looks like a bad business model for any company coming in there. So, let's say Lennon Choice goes belly up. What's stopping the next guy coming in, working seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and having 200 trucks coming in there every day? That's all. Great, thank you. Are there any further questions from the public? Once the public portion is closed, that's it. So, if you have something to say, please stand up now. Wave your hand. Okay, come on up.
Allison Sullivan, 42 Arthur Street.
Sorry, Allison. Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
I know you say that aloof has nothing to do with this, but the noxious odors do have something to do with this. You knock all those trees down, and it's just gonna open up the gateways, and that problem is not solved yet. That problem has to be solved before we do anything else. I'm just begging you to get that done before we even approve anything in that spot. And as far as the preapproval, I don't really understand why that application is still valid, but you're saying it is, and I have to take you on your word. I do have a question about the plans. It's required to either have two, one parking spot per two employees, or, and/or, one parking spot per 300 square feet of warehouse space. So, that's either for them, if my calculations are right, they either put 15 spots, or 566. What determines how many spots they get to choose to have? Is it depending on, like, your choice, their choice? Is it what they do in the building? I'm just curious. And, you know, just, I agree with everything everyone is saying. I'm, you know, very sad. I live very close to this, and I've had to deal with a lot of issues in that surrounding property, and I think we just need to figure out what direction Orange Town wants to go in this area. We will sell our house if they get approved, and that's not a warning, that is just a fact. We can't stay there. It's just not feasible for us anymore. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, John Harrigan, 6 Spruce Street. Sorry, last name? Harrigan, H.A.R.R.I.G.A.N. Six Spruce.
Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. I do.
Thanks.
So, again, you know, like many people, I wasn't going to say anything, but as you said, to get to the record, I agree with everything that was said here tonight, but I think my major concern is, coming from Spruce Street, would be the traffic on the opposite side on 303, and the danger possibly of tractor-trailers coming in and out of Glen Shaw. Is that the correct? Yeah. Simply because that rise, that rise coming over from Blauvelt into Orangeburg, you know, cars coming over it. It is dangerous coming over, trying to make those turns in and out. And you were saying that 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM would be the working hours, and that drive time, especially the 4:30 to 6:30, is particularly high density. And so, I'm concerned with the, you know, trucks coming in and out of there and causing a problem. And I would like to just kind of reiterate what was mentioned before, is it seems a false dichotomy to assume that, you know, we either, you know, go with this smaller square footage building, or they're going to build something larger. You know, it doesn't seem to match to be assumed that they would just build. They might be good neighbors from somebody else, but possibly not for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once, going twice. All right. Public portion's closed. The applicant, would you like to respond?
I'd like to break.
Do you want a break?
I'd like to break.
Yeah. So, take a short 10-minute recess or so. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Please have a seat. Thank you. All right. Dom, would you like to answer some of those questions for us, please?
Thank you. By the way, I'm an attorney that's doing a job for his client. If I represented you, I would do a job for you. I am listening to everybody. There's a tremendous fear involved here. Fear on the problem with somebody next door, fear with the odors being produced by the companies in that area. Please look at this very, very carefully. This was reviewed by the Planning Board. They gave a negative declaration, and in the negative declaration, it specifically says, "It does not affect air quality, it does not affect surface or groundwater quality, it does not affect noise levels, it does not affect external traffic patterns." That is the negative declaration which the Planning Board gave, and which traffic studies were gone, were presented, and engineering data was presented to support this. So, please, you have a negative declaration by your Planning Board who reviewed these items. We are here primarily, primarily on the enclosure situation. In reference to what we have to show, we showed what they had, what the owner has a matter of right. We're not saying the new owner has this. We're saying what the existing owner has a matter of right. He has a matter of right to build this. Whether he builds it or not, I'm not gonna take that position right now. I don't think it's, I should. What I'm trying to say, this person who's buying the property came in and said, "I saw what he had a right to do." He could've bought that map, he did not. And by the way, Dennis, when you get a chance, you'll explain to him why that's a legitimate permit today.
The local law that Ms. Hurley recited into the record earlier, that's Section 21A-14, the section of the Orange Town Code that Ms. Hurley recited into the record earlier, Section 21A-14, Paragraph D, was enacted, adopted by the Town Board on July 24 of 2006 by Local Law Number 12 of 2006, which was nearly, well, a year and a half roughly, after the final site development plan approval of the Planning Board of October 13, 2004. Therefore, that provision, Section 21A-14D, is inapplicable to the October 13, 2004 decision-
Right.
...of the Planning Board with regard to this site.
So, therefore, they can build the other one. We're not, we're not trying to create a fear concept. We're trying to say what a new individual who's trying to buy this property came in and said, "I won't build the big one, I'm gonna try to build a smaller one, I'm gonna try to build a better buffer area, I'm trying to live with the neighborhood." Quatre now. He does not produce odors, he does not produce a noise problem, he does not produce those things. We have proved that to the Planning Board. I know it's a fear concept, and there are people that are very, very upset with the odors in that area. This is not an odor producer, it is a warehouse, okay? And the elements are pretty much done there, okay? Is there a hardship if he encloses it? Yes, it's a $3 million hardship if he encloses it, if that's what you want for the record. This use is the best use in the LI district. You don't have manufacturing, you are limiting your time, you are limiting what you have. It is the best use for the residents in the manufactured district, and it is a taxpayer, okay? We're not trying to hurt the people in the area, we're not trying to hurt anybody in terms of where they live, but please understand, this is not an odor producer, this is not a noise producer, this is not a traffic problem. They've already been resolved and analyzed by the Planning Board who did this. Now, you asked, does anything take place in the building? Yes, it does. We did tell the Planning Board that there will be some sewers, because sometimes fabrics come in, and there will be some people that'll sew fabrics to repair a tear. We did tell the Planning Board there may be four, five, or 10 seamstresses that would make some kind of adjustments if something came in and they had to fix it. That's the only, and I don't call that manufacturing, I call that a repair, or anything of that sort. And we did disclose that to the Planning Board. The landlocked properties, the landlocked property was created by the Town of Orange Town. They had access to Troop Road, but when this was done, it was specifically said, "That's only an emergency access." Okay? So, they created, the Town of Orange Town created the landlock. They don't have a right to go to Mountain View Avenue. If the trucks came out, went into Mountain View Avenue, Town of Orange said, "No, the only place you can go out is Glen Shaw Street," which is the right way to do it, because you're going onto a commercial road, and you're really creating no traffic problems. Route 303 has been studied, and studied, and studied, and it can take much more traffic than it's there today. As in terms of time, we've already locked in the time. We've told, we've told the Planning Board, and we also tell the zoning board. And they bring up holidays, people are not working holidays, people are talking about regular working days from 8:00 to 6:00, I think that was the time, not working Saturday and Sunday. I don't know how to, I don't know how to calm down the fears here, because the only variance we're looking for is the fact that he doesn't have to enclose the loading. That's the only variance. Everything else meets your Town Code. And the problem on that, we kind of said we have these new places that we can not have a noise problem, not have a sound problem, and that's where we are right now. Do we have any kind of answer on that question?
Sure.
No, you were gonna speak to the client.
Yeah.
Okay. We are speaking to the client right now. If you give us a couple of minutes, we were thinking of a combination, maybe of enclosing some of them, and that's what we're talking to the client right now. Not, just to try to help the neighborhood accept this. He's not coming in there to be a bad neighbor, he's coming in there to be a good neighbor, even though people don't agree. If the people have a problem with industry, I'm gonna accord. If the town says there's something unhealthy here, I'm gonna accord. I am not defending, if, I'm not defending, but so far, nobody's produced anything that would find this kind of a use a problem. It is the best use for your LI zone. Additional employees, yes, there're gonna be some additional employees, but any situation's gonna have employees, but we cut down the parking from, from an approved 252 down to 75, and that kind of is based on a formula. In other words, you have a right on the area of it, and you have a right for warehouse space which requires less parking. What do you got? The client has said, if you take a look at the map again, if the client has said you could see, what is that? I guess that's the north?
Yeah, the north.
He will enclose the north section. You maybe want to show it?
Yeah, the north.
And how many loading docks?
So, on this point, on the alternate one we submitted, to try to maintain on the same buffer, these loading docks are gonna be there, so it would be four to, if we can, on the other side, five. That five would be enclosed, and then the remaining eight on the side would stay open.
On what side?
Basically. It would be on the, on the west side.
What about the north loading docks on the west side?
This use is the best use in the LI district. You don't have manufacturing, you are limiting your time, you are limiting what you have to, it is the best use for the residents in the manufactured district, and it is a taxpayer, okay? We're not trying to hurt the people in the area. We're not trying to hurt anybody in terms of where they live, but please understand, this is not an odor producer, this is not a noise producer, this is not a traffic problem. They've already been resolved and analyzed by the planning board who did this. Now, you asked, does anything take place in the building? Yes, it does. We did tell the planning board that there will be some sewers, because sometimes fabrics come in, and there will be some people that'll sew fabrics to repair a tear. We did tell the planning board there may be four or 10 seamstresses that would make some kind of adjustments if something came in and they had to fix it. That's the only, and I don't call that manufacturing, I call that a repair or anything of that sort. And we did disclose that to the planning board. The landlocked properties, the landlocked property was created by the town of Orange Town. They had access to Troop Road, but when this was done, it was specifically said, "That's only an emergency access." Okay? So they created, the town of Orange Town created the landlock. They don't have a right to go to Mountain View Avenue. If the trucks came out, went into Mountain View Avenue, town of Orange said, "No. The only place you can go out is Glenshaw Street," which is the right way to do it because you're going onto a commercial road and you're really creating no traffic problems. Route 303 has been studied and studied and studied, and it could take much more traffic than it's there today. In terms of time, we've already locked in the time. We've told, we've told the planning board, and we also tell the zoning board. And they bring up holidays. People are not working holidays. People are talking about regular working days from 8:00 to 6:00, I think that was the time, not working Saturday and Sunday. I don't know how to calm down the fears here, because the only variance we're looking for is the fact that he doesn't have to enclose the loading. That's the only variance. Everything else meets your town code. And the problem on that, we kind of said we have these new places that we can not have a noise problem, not have a sound problem, and that's where we are right now. Do we have any kind of answer on that question?
For, nobody's there.
No, you were going to speak to the client.
Yeah, he's reviewing.
Okay. We are speaking to the client right now. If you give us a couple of minutes, we were thinking of a combination, maybe of enclosing some of them, and that's what we're talking to the client right now. Not just to try to help the neighborhood accept this. He's not coming in there to be a bad neighbor, he's coming in there to be a good neighbor, even though people don't agree. If the people have a problem with industry, I'm going to court. If the town says there's something unhealthy here, I'm going to court. I am not defending, if, I'm not defending, but so far, nobody's produced anything that would find this kind of a use a problem. It is the best use for your LI zone. Additional employees, yes, there are going to be some additional employees, but any situation's going to have employees. But we cut down the parking from, from an approved 252 down to 75, and that kind of is based on a formula. In other words, you have a right on the area of it, and you have a right for warehouse space which requires less parking. What do you got? The client has said, if you take a look at the map again, if the client has said, you could see, what is that? I guess that's the north.
Yeah, the north.
He will enclose the north section. You maybe want to show it?
Yeah, the north.
And how many loading docks?
So on this, on the alternate one we submitted to try to maintain the same buffer, these loading docks are in there. So it would be four to, if we can have on the other side, five. That five would be enclosed, and then the remaining eight on the side of the state.
On what side?
Basically. Eight would be on the west side.
What about the north loading docks on the west side? Can you enclose those also? The ones over the top of that little projection?
Yep.
These here?
Yeah.
Right now, he's saying, no.
Well, as of the moment, that's his position. Okay? The hardest thing to overcome is fear. There is not fear from this kind of use. It may be fear if we were putting in an industrial plant, if they were going to produce chemicals, if we're going to do so and so. That could be fear. Does the neighborhood have some problems? Yes, they do, but not from this kind of use. This does not add to the problem in that neighborhood. And the problem in the neighborhood will be corrected. The town is working on it. They've hired, they're going to hire engineers to study this. They're working with the DEC. They will clean up the odor problem. The town will do it. This is not a producer. Your own planning board has agreed that it's not a producer. I really don't know what to say. I've heard all kinds of fear here, and not for this job. This job was there, it's LI zone, it's always been LI zone. The owners of this property have paid substantial amount of taxes on the property. They have a right to use it. They're not doing anything proper, and they're using it in the terms of your code.
No.
Can, I think there was a question.
Yes.
On the distance that was asked from someone who spoke before. The distance from those loading berths to the rail trail?
It's a budding, the property abuts the rail trail.
I understand. So what is the distance from those loading berths to the rail trail?
It is just under 80 feet from the rail trail property to the furthest point of the building.
No, what about the closest point?
Uh, yeah, that's it.
Oh, okay, not the furthest point.
But that's the building, not the loop road.
Correct, yeah, correct.
And the loop road, and what is the loop road to there?
Six inches.
Well, we have to keep the road. No, there is a drainage stream which we have to keep there, and that's the town's.
Correct, that's 30 feet.
30 feet?
Did you say 80 feet or 80?
80.
80.
80.
80 or 80.
Okay.
No, no, 30, 30 feet is reasonable.
30 feet to the road.
To the road. Which we have to build. We have to build it anyway. We have to build it, circulate the building. We have to build the road.
That's half the size of the building.
Sir, sir, you can't speak, you can't yell out like that.
What is he talking about? Okay, I, you want to add anything, Jesse?
Just the other, there was one comment about the highway department weighing in. They have weighed in, their comments are in. They said that this project would have de minimis impact.
That was the Rotten County Highway. I think the commenter was referring to the town highway department, and your application is sent to the town highway department.
Correct. Yes, and not only that, but they concluded it was okay when we got the negative declaration. There is not a traffic problem. We had a traffic engineer present the data.
It was sent to the town highway department. If they had any concerns, they would have communicated.
Well, you know Bruce Peters represented the town highway department as well as anything else, and we went through this with Bruce Peters. We do not have a problem with traffic.
I'm not arguing with you.
I know, I'm just trying to get it, I'm just trying to put it for the record.
It was sent to the Orange Town Highway Department. If they had any concerns or requirements, they would be communicated to the planning board and/or the ZB.
Can you enclose more bays? That's not enough for me. I'm still at either moving the building east, I'm sorry, west.
Okay, we, on paper, it looks terrific, except if you take a look, there's a difference in grade.
There's an or there, or closing more bays.
I'm one member of the board, I'm closing all bays, not just one.
Or reduce the bays and close them.
Yeah, no bays.
I need a couple more of those.
Okay, yeah, yeah, confirm with your client, because that's where we're at. That's just not enough for us. We'll just take another recess. And these and those will be open. No, but that will be open.
The whole, the whole thing.
Awesome, awesome.
Definitely awesome.
It's all up here, there.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're on record.
What they're enclosing, use compass northeast, southwest, and numbers and quantity.
Got it, okay. Sheesh, and quantity.
Back on the record, we have spoken to the client. He said he will enclose the loading docks on the north side, and I guess that's the west side. He will enclose those loading docks. The only ones that will be open are the ones on the south.
So I've, that's if that's 13, right?
13 loading.
Yes.
That's phase one, all 13 on phase one.
That's correct.
Will be enclosed.
That's correct.
I like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's nice, thank you.
Debbie, do you have that?
And phase two.
Part of phase two.
Including phase two, there's a total of 22.
19.
19.
Where is this 22 coming from?
I don't know.
It was published incorrectly.
It was published that way, but it's, it's only 19.
So for the record, there's a grand total of 19.
We would do twice.
I like paper, I like what's on paper.
Yeah, I mean, as one member of the board, I deliver that. Thank you. Any further comments from the board?
Okay, make a motion to close. Second.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, for legal reasons, we actually will have to reserve decision. They will be made at the, probably the next hearing.
Debbie, do we have room on the first January meeting?
Just for other business?
Yes, I'll be able to.
Unless the board's ready to vote.
Dennis, I have.
Well, hold on. The public hearing's closed, Don, we're talking.
We could tell, not the board. Let's go to the board's side.
Okay, 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 now we can do it.
We're staying, we're staying.
Thank you.
Everyone.
I've suggested finding that buffer question that do not review, not to finding. Have we talked about the buffer, whether the plan would be, if you're not reviewing it, you're not doing a variance for that?
Okay.
If it turns out it needs a variance, then you've got to come back to the.
You got it.
Plus the condition.
So I'm making a motion to approve the 13 north-facing, sorry, the 13 bays that will be enclosed. So I'm really approving the six that will remain not enclosed, which are the six southeast-facing bays.
Which are not going to be constructed.
Which are not constructed in phase one, that's a phase two build-out. All remaining bays will be enclosed. I also approve the 280A and the street frontage variance. Also, would like to refer to Akebor to review the screening and the privacy walls still that they had mentioned that they would install. The business shall only operate Monday to Friday from 8:00 to 6:00, and shall not operate on federal holidays. And as a finding of fact, the discussion regarding the buffer and setback agreed to by the planning board is not addressed in this approval or this motion. I find that there are other bays in the LI zone in the town that are not enclosed. And I think that by having the unenclosed bays on the southeast side will have as little impact as possible for the surrounding neighbors.
There's a second agreement that the remaining bays will have the skirts.
Yes.
Sure. So there's a second by Joan to modify that motion, also to ensure that the bays have privacy skirts or sound attenuating skirts to further reduce.
The open bays.
The opening bays.
The open bays, yes, thank you.
But a part of phase two.
Which is also part of phase two, yes. Would you like to further motion that, Joan?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye opposed?
Aye.
Board of one. Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye opposed? Thank you.